Coronavirus.
Okay, welcome everyone. We are going to be doing the Finance Committee's meeting tonight. I have Marie Angelidis here, the Chairwoman of the Select Board, to make an announcement about the Select Board meeting which was scheduled tonight. Marie?
Yes, we won't be able to have a meeting tonight. We could not get a quorum due to illness and the new requirements. If you aren't feeling well, you're not supposed to attend public meetings. And I'm sure everyone got the red alert that went out. And Monday, the Chief will be here to discuss it further. And any announcements that you wanted to make, Lynn?
No, other than just put out a townwide code-red call and update to the Facebook page, Twitter, website, just regarding some measures that we're taking related to the COVID-19 coronavirus. Just public meetings, we're limiting those. Large group gatherings, over 50 people, we're limiting those. Asking that business with town offices be conducted virtually, either by phone, email, or by using the Dropbox outside of Town Hall. You can get a full listing of all that release of information on the town website. It's posted as of about 20 minutes ago. Thank you.
Thank you all. Today, for the benefit of folks at home, we have the six members of our Finance Committee here tonight. We have our Secretary Eileen Moran, Kaya Kosowski, Donald Griffith, and William Welch, and Tom DiNazio. Thank you guys all for coming out tonight. Dr. Andrew Lamb is not going to be able to be with us tonight. The first thing I wanted to start off with is to... We had, I think, three outstanding minutes. Is that correct, Eileen?
Two, I thought.
Two, and then there was one that I sent you tonight for... So we have the minutes for February 24th, which have passed around. Did you get a copy? I got it copied on Eileen. You also have the minutes you received for February 18th. And then the March 2nd minutes. Just everybody, maybe with the exception of Eileen's, had a chance to review the minutes. And so at this time, I could take them in order. I'd entertain a motion to accept the February 18 minutes of the Finance Committee. Do you have any motion on the February 18 minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes of the Finance Committee from February 18 to 2020.
On second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on February 18 minutes? All in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions?
Abstaining.
So, okay, so now we move to the February 24 minutes. You've got those in the email. I also passed them out today. Take a motion to accept those minutes.
I'll move to accept the February 24 minutes.
Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstaining.
Oh, abstaining.
Okay. Jason, okay, Jason. And so now we go to the March 2nd minutes. So again, I'll take a motion for the March 2nd minutes.
I'll move to approve the March 2nd minutes.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Any opposed, abstentions?
Abstaining.
Okay, thank you. The next thing I wanted to move to swiftly tonight was we had the benefit from our CFO of some consultation on the upcoming warrant articles. And the Finance Committee has had an opportunity to consider some of those and talks that we are in advance, have some preparation to consider them once the Select Board passes down those final versions to us so that we're... That the recommendations don't get tied up in the committee and we're able to publish them in the warrant in a timely fashion. One of the things that the Finance Committee requested, and I'm very pleased to see, is that our CPC chair, Steve Weiss, is here to go over some of the CPC articles specifically. And there was one... There were a couple of folks on the Finance Committee that also wanted to talk to Dr. Metz about the planning, community's recommendations for the article. So without further ado, I guess I'll take you guys in order. Steve, if you would, please.
Thank you for having me. I don't know if you wanted me to make any sort of presentation or just answer questions. I can do whichever you'd like.
Could we maybe start? Could you give us maybe a two-minute summary on the process?
Sure.
And then also, just to recap, I think most of us know, but maybe recap on where the funds come from.
Sure. Well, the first part is the funds come from a combination of a 1% surcharge on the tax bill and also from fees at the Registry of Deeds. Our process that we've adopted over the last several years is roughly as follows. There's sort of a seasonality to this. We ask that the applications be submitted usually either the last week in November, first week in December. We then go through a process of first figuring out if the... Facially, if any particular application is eligible for the four categories of a program: open space, recreation, historical preservation, and affordable housing. Sorry, it took me a moment there on the fourth one. What we then do is we typically invite the applicants and someone from the town. CPC is sort of unique in that private citizens can submit applications. But we do try to get coordination with private applicants and also with the town because if things are going to be done on town land, the town, Mario Mazza, the town, has to supervise the work, even if it's a private application. But we bring people in usually during the course of December and January so they can make presentations to us, so our board can ask questions of them. And then sometime in January, we usually... We hold a public hearing, which we did again this year. We're required to do that once a year under the bylaw. And then we decide on what applications to approve. And that is a function... It's a little bit different every year. This year turned out to be an easier year than the one before. Last year, we had 17 applications for far more money than we could have possibly allocated. And this year, there were a total of eight applications, one of which was withdrawn early on because it turns out it was probably ineligible. Even though we loved the application, it was ineligible. This was the one on the public shade tree replacement. We checked with our state organization, and it just didn't fit any of the categories, unfortunately. So we did the applications. So that's our process. And I do let... I try to let Dr. Metz know what... We kind of coordinate a little bit. I don't think we had a meeting this year, but we do try to at least kind of see if there are applications that are being... For funds that are overlapping in any way, shape, or form. And then, so what we did this year, we had a total of eight applications this year for a total of some $676,000. As I indicated, one was withdrawn. That was the public shade tree replacement. We approved six of them. And I think I'd sent Mr. Pasterzik a summary that he may have... That he hopefully sent to you. And there was one that Mr. Mazza had submitted for the Blueberry Hills School Playground Equipment Replacement that we declined. One of the reasons... And maybe I'm getting ahead of some of the questions here. The reason we declined that is we have asked him over the years... He usually submits anywhere somewhere between three and five applications. We've asked him to prioritize which ones are most important to him, which ones are most urgent. And this one, A, this one, he said of the three was the least... Was his third priority. It's also for a lot of money. So it may come back next year, maybe for less money or something like that. But that's why that one was declined. I should say, I'm willing to take... Anxious and eager to take any questions. I will say, and I don't mean to sound too much like the lawyer I am, but on some level, what I say may be my own opinion as opposed to the entire... Those of the entire committee. I will say that of all the committees and boards I've served on, both in the town and privately, this is one of the most functional committees and groups of people that I've ever worked with. It's such a terrific committee to work with, and I love the work we're doing.
Well, thank you for that. We appreciate the work you do at the CPC. I don't know if folks on the committee had specific questions about specific articles, but I do appreciate... You did send out the application... Some of the application documents themselves. I don't know how many folks here had an opportunity to take a look. I took a look at some of them. So I appreciate, you know, the thoroughness that you approached your meeting here with us tonight. Again, we just briefly went over them, but without having you here to answer any questions, we really didn't get into the nuts and bolts of any particular article because we didn't have the benefit of you being at our prior meeting. I can start at the end with Article 30, at least on the last copy I saw of the draft warrant. Again, these warrant articles are going to be subject to change. This is not a finalized warrant. But if you are with me, this is the one that refers to the skate park.
Yep.
And my recollection of this was... This was... Started off as a citizens petition that was brought to the floor and wasn't recommended by the Finance Committee. It was actually voted down at town meeting. And if I... And again, I guess the point of my question is, if I remember correctly, bringing this proposal specifically through a body like CPC was one of the suggestions that was made with respect to that particular initiative, that citizens initiative. Was that... Is that your...
Yeah, I don't recall that specifically at town meeting, but what I remember at the town meeting where that was voted down is that there was a question about the process, that maybe there was a better process for doing this. And we... So it did come before us by the same people, Mr. Grant and several adolescents in town. And we did approve it for two or three reasons. Again, I think I'm speaking mostly for the committee here. Number one, one of the issues that came up at town meeting is that the citizens petition was going to be... Would require money to come out of the general town budget. Well, these funds are coming out of the CPC budget, and this is one of the things specifically that we can fund. It's open space and recreation. That's what the money is there for. And second, we actually... We thought the way the project was submitted was actually pretty logical to first do a study about whether... About the feasibility of a skate park, what it would cost, where it might be located, and all of those things. And then depending on what happens later on, they'll come back and ask for more money maybe to build the skate park. We don't know this, but taking this one step at a time, we thought was pretty good. And frankly, the presentation that was put on by the young men, who I think were about 12 years old, the night that they were in front of us, was actually really heartfelt. These are kids that... My kids are way beyond skate park age, but these kids... This is something that would be used in the long term. So we thought it was a worthwhile application. Again, it's right within our wheelhouse. One of the things that CPC is meant to do is to be able to fund the things that wouldn't ordinarily get funded out of the general town budget.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I had a couple of questions. More, I guess, process, but one, just trying to tie off some numbers. So in Article 24, I don't know if you have it in front of you?
I do.
So Article 24 is the appropriation of $8,000 for administrative expenses or costs. And then right below it, in the... I'll call it the explanation or the justification. It talks about $3,000 for annual dues. So I didn't know what the difference in the five was.
No, the annual dues, which I think are actually 1,500, maybe they've gone up, I have to double check. But then we also have some administrative expenses. We...
You have a clerk or administrative assistant?
Yeah, exactly. We were using Marissa O'Brien as our clerk to keep track of... She keeps track of... Helps us keep track of the money. We request... We require quarterly reports from people who have received grants. She would doggedly, gently but doggedly make sure we got those quarterly reports and annual reports and kept really a really good track of what was going on. She's now left the town, as you may know, but we've hired Bianca as our administrative person. So we... And we pay her out of that budget.
Got it. I didn't know if it was a typo or it was just an example.
No, and we've never actually spent the whole $8,000. And I've had this conversation with Mr. Pasterzik before. If we...
If you don't.
If we... Yeah, we're better off... If we spend three or four, $5,000, the remaining $3,000 just gets put back into our available funds for next year. We'd rather budget $8,000 and spend five than budget $5,000 and spend eight.
Got it. And then on Articles 25 and 26, both of them have to do with roof replacements. And I guess my question was sort of more an understanding of the facts of why we didn't do these all at once the year before? Or is it that we got into it and it was just a lot worse once we got into it?
The person to really answer that question is Mario Mazza, but I'll do the best I can because the answer is slightly different with the two different projects. The one for the Community House, it is because once they got in there and started taking a look, they had asked for... I forget, the year before?
$68,000.
$68,000. And the bid, when it went out to bid, the numbers came in in the $180,000 range. It was... The damage was more extensive, and therefore the repair work was more extensive. And this will allow that project to finally get done. With the library roof, the project the year before was just for a small portion of the roof at the library. This project, this application, will do the entire roof, which includes the part that was put on when the library was last renovated. And I think it was 1991 or '92. The roof is 27 or 28 years old. It's passed its useful life. So, and I think there may be some advantages of doing it all at once as opposed to just doing the part that was having some issues.
And then my last question is on Article 27, and it has, I guess, more to do with timing and process. So my understanding is there's an open town meeting or a public meeting on March 31st to discuss open space within the town. And so my question really has to do with if, you know, on March 34th or thereafter, there's a decision that the fields should be more multifunctional. So a softball field shouldn't be just for softball, but for softball and baseball, or softball, baseball, and lacrosse. I guess my question has to do with timing and process in terms of making a commitment of this expenditure of 40 grand without really knowing what the strategic vision is going to be.
It's a very good question. I guess the first part of this is this application was made in late November, and we were evaluating it in December before the open space meeting was on the radar screen. I can tell you why I thought it was a worthwhile project. And part of the thought process, maybe this will answer the question inferentially or not, one of the questions was... This would put dugouts for the varsity softball field where the varsity girls play. Ironically enough, the JV field over at Turner Park is in much better shape than the varsity field. And a couple of people asked, well, are those dugouts going to get in the way of being able to play soccer there? And the answer is no. We know where they're going to be located. It shouldn't... These...
Basically in the corner.
Yeah, they're basically along the fence. Yeah, so it's along the periphery of the field in the first place. So it shouldn't make any difference. Now, I can't answer that specifically in terms of whatever the open space people may decide. The open space meeting may happen. But we did think about that. Would this... These structures interfere with other uses of the field? We were satisfied that they would not.
I'm going to add to. I think the infield's of both the boys varsity and the girls varsity are kind of unique.
Right.
That it's not going to overlap the infield's of... It'd be soccer usage or lacrosse usage would not overlap the infield usage. It would certainly go off into the outfield and stuff of that nature.
Yeah, and I, to be clear, I don't disagree with the merit or the value of this expenditure. I mean, I just recall, you know, last year in May when the Wolfswat Field issue came up, and really there we were in the middle of the town with, you know, the baseball advocates on one hand, the lacrosse advocates on the other, and what was supposed to be our grand plan kind of got torn to shreds a bit. So that's why I'm questioning a little bit... Just trying to get more information on what I would call the timing and process in relation to this March 31st meeting.
Yeah, well, and I suppose...
And your answer about the dugout actually is helpful because that would tend to indicate that, you know, maybe, you know, we can make other uses of it, perhaps.
Yeah, it's a dugout and fencing.
Yep.
So again, it's around the periphery. We did think about that. Not... I can't say we had the foresight to think about an open space plan, but we did think about it about multi... About whether it would affect other uses of the field.
Respect to that, the softball field that you're talking about, is this the field that's in the corner?
Yes.
Of... So...
Right over by Blueberry Hills.
Right. So imagining the field as a... It is almost a... The entire use of that space is almost a giant rectangle. And the softball field is in the northwest corner of the rectangle.
Correct.
So the fences are on the periphery.
Yes.
Right. And the dugouts would also be on the periphery.
And right now, there's a few permanent benches sitting there.
Right.
That are... Basically, I think the dugouts would go basically where those benches are right now.
Right. Does anyone else have any... Any other questions on...
Hey, Mario, if I could ask one question?
Please.
Given the circumstances with the coronavirus, there's a possibility the appropriation process, town meeting, may change or potentially be postponed. Are any of these articles necessary to actually pass? Other than the administrative one, which would have to be done before the... Would have to be done before any administrative costs would be concerned. But all the ones dealing with capital, are any of them of dire importance that if they were postponed, would create havoc, in your opinion?
Boy, that's a question I wasn't expecting to have to answer this evening.
You'd think Marie for it, quite honestly.
This is a circumstances beyond all of our control question. If I had to... I'm going to defer a little bit, but if I had to guess or try to answer the question as best I could, I would suggest that numbers... The Community House roof and gutter repair and the store's library roof, you might want to ask Mr. Mazza how urgent the problems are. There are some leaks in the roof, I think, and some infirmities in both of those. I don't want to sound like a Weasley lawyer, but I can't speak to exactly how urgent those really are. Those are the only two that I would think might have some urgency because with the library, if there's a really... If there's a real problem with a leaky roof, that could affect the collection.
Yeah. I mean, I would agree that those potentially would be the only two that have some time sensitivity attached to them.
Paul, what's the option if they're... If the meeting gets pushed out?
Well, yeah. I mean, we could actually appropriate the money in the fall so that the project... Some of these other projects would be postponed six months, maybe get done in the spring or a year, but...
But if... But for those that are urgent, what's the option for those that are urgent?
Those that are urgent, we're going to have to wait and see if town meeting goes on as scheduled.
Assuming it doesn't. To, you know, to your question about him, which ones are urgent. What's the option if we decide they need them?
Kind of yet to be determined. I mean, the Department of Revenue has not given any definitive answers or any advisements.
Go ahead. But this is happening throughout the state, and there's a lot of conversation at the state agencies, the Elections Division, Secretary of the Commonwealth, on what this means for municipalities to have spring town meeting or spring elections. So there's a lot of chatter happening above us, but it's something we're watching and considering and keeping in eyesight.
There are provisions on the budgetary type of articles. But on these capital ones or special articles, I'm not sure if there is guidance at this point in time. There's none that I'm aware of.
Yep.
I get your question. Earlier, you said that there were... I think you said that you approved ultimately six.
Yes.
And I have seven, so...
Oh, one of them is the administrative one, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I... Six actual applications plus the administrative article.
Okay, so the knotweed one is not dropping off.
No, that was approved.
Okay.
And yes. I'm sorry, there's seven warrant articles, but that includes the $8,000 administrative one.
Is that... There was a question that was raised an hour ago. Remember, when we talked about this one with respect to the Japanese knotwood eradication? And again, this may have been discussed at length, I'm assuming, in the... Or maybe not. The question was, if this is an invasive species that we're talking about removing, what is going to prevent it from returning? So if we're removing it from a limited area, what prevents it from spreading to the adjacent areas or...
And again, I'll try to answer that question as best I can, although the Conservation Commission probably can answer it better than I can. This is actually the third time, I think, we've had a Japanese knotweed eradication application in front of us. The first two were actually for conservation land down in the meadows. And those are each... They have each been three-year programs. Knotweed is an invasive species, and unfortunately, it does come back. So there has to be retreatments and eventually retreatments. This particular one, this is conservation land. It's a, I think, a one and a half acre parcel. I forget. Now I've got to see exactly...
1.2 acres in the explanation.
Yeah, and it's... I'm trying to recall. It's off Chestnut Road. It's, you know, it's a very small spot, and with a... That's why it's only $4,800. Hopefully, if the eradication is done in an appropriate way, it won't come back for a number of years. How many years, I don't know. But talking with the Conservation Commission over previous applications, they've been pretty successful. They've been satisfied in what the projects do. But unfortunately, it's an invasive species. It's not permanent.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions for Mr. Weiss? Thank you so much for taking the time to go over these.
My pleasure. And if people have other questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them, either by email or by phone.
Thank you. Dr. Metz?
First of all, before I start, let me apologize. I was not forwarded a copy of the warrants pertaining to me. So I'm flying cold on this one a little bit.
So...
I can tell you a little bit about our process.
Okay, thank you.
The... Our purview really are the capital items that the town wishes to purchase or acquire. The... Basically from the DPW, but also from the schools, which is sort of under the auspices of DPW. We... This includes the fire department, but not fire trucks, and it does not include the police department. So that kind of gives an idea about where we look at. Our process starts roughly October when the town manager has talked to her departments and provides us a proposed set of purchases she wants to... In this case, she would like to... For us to consider. And this year was a little bit messed up because Ms. Simmons was not here in time to give us that. So Mr. Pasterzik was kind enough to step up to the plate and reach all the requests from us. We... Our committee then has prioritizes the requests according to four criteria. The first one is required by statute. The second one has to do with safety. The third criteria is it enhances... The third criteria is it enhances the efficiency of the town, or provide services that are required but don't have currently on tap. And the last is aesthetics. We, our budget, our, the amount of money we have for each project has to exceed $25,000 and must extend the process of the lifetime of the project by five years. This, you notice it does not include building, which is the purview of the building committee. So our, our committee meets several times before February, and after we complete our final recommendation, I provide a report to the, the stock board for their consideration.
Thank you. I, thank you, Dr. Metz. I think that there was some specific questions about what the committee's recommendations were versus what ultimately was approved or weren't. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, my understanding is this is just a draft that we're looking at and not necessarily the recommendations of the committee.
It is a draft. Let me just explain, it is, it's basically what the town manager had submitted, and there are some subtle differences between the two recommendations. I can go through those recommendations. Basically, the town manager is proposing $25,000 more than the capital planning committee for the shoring of equipment and the fire reserve. The capital planning committee has two different capital requests that are $15,000 each. One is for the best disabatement, the other one is for the glass at the trophy showcases over at Long Metal High School. Each of those are $15,000. And then I also believe the town manager has a $41,000 request for exterior doors that was towards the bottom of the list.
At Greenwood Center?
At Greenwood, it was kind of the bottom of the list of the capital planning committee.
The, I can answer those three questions if you like. The first one is the asbestos abatement. That's a safety issue, so that's why we kind of dipped a little bit below our purview. Thought that it was an important thing to consider, and this seemed to be the funds they're looking at to be able to do that. The second one again is a safety issue. The glass cases inside this high school, one of them is already broken. Apparently, the glass they used was not the right kind of glass, and we felt that for safety reasons, that was an important quest to fulfill. The last one is the Greenwood school doors. The use of that building is still a little bit undecided right now, and because of the other articles that we were looking at, we thought they were a little higher priority until that decision had been finalized.
Paul, I seem to recall that we did the trophy case last year too, and that was another budget item that we did last year. I guess my question is, is this a recurring issue?
It's not, it's not a recurring issue. I'd have to go back to see if there was an appropriation last year.
I don't recall one.
It's, it's the same issue. Again, I'd have to go back to see if there was an appropriation made last year. I mean, there's an incident that happened there probably a couple of years ago, so maybe that's where it came up.
Yeah.
I'd have to go back and look, though I don't go off the top of my head, Bill.
And then, I guess my second question is, for Lynn, just again, more of a process question, do you use the same sort of ranking criteria when you ultimately come up with your recommended list after talking to the department?
The same ranking as the capital planning committee?
Yes. Statutory safety, efficiency, and aesthetics?
I don't think it's as specific. It was a broader approach this year, and I can say that the process that was done this year was very short for myself at least, and I envision it changing slightly on my end next year. I don't think, certainly, we, all of that was considered, and I can tell you, you know, I don't disagree with Dr. Metz about those two, the asbestos and the glass doors. However, they didn't meet the monetary threshold, so that's, that's why I didn't include them. And we had internal conversations about whether or not it could be addressed within the department's budget this fiscal year.
So the, the factors that Mr. Metz, your, Dr. Metz, that you're talking about, are those just considered, I guess, best practices, or is it driven by state requirement or regulation?
Probably more best practices.
Okay.
Dr. Metz?
You're on the wrong side, you should be with us.
Yeah. How, has the discussion around the middle schools influenced the list this year recently?
No.
So no assumptions made regarding the futures of the...
No.
Is that question related to the Greenwood?
No, the middle schools, so the, there's been conversation in years past, like, not recently, but way, way past, where, you know, should we spend money on this capital investment if we're going to drastically change the schools or not? But there was never ever a timeline or any, you know, and at times, so we, you know, the committees that I was a part of at the time always went ahead with it, and I just wanted to see if that was still true.
Okay, so, Dr. Metz, you're saying that the considerations with respect to renovation or replacement of our middle school didn't play any role in these particular...
You know, if I can just... There's two issues here. One is replacement of things like lockers at Blueberry, which keeps coming up, which we declined to fund or recommend funding. On the other hand, there's boiler issues in the schools and in some of the other town buildings. They were all bought about the same time. They all have a design flaw, and they're starting to fail all at the same time. And given the fact that no matter what the decision about the schools is gonna be, they're gonna need to be, the ones we have right now are gonna be heated. And Mr. Mazza has told me that he's working to make sure that the boilers that are purchased can be brought to the new school.
I was gonna say, the other thing too, is the town does have a permanent building committee? That when we're talking about renovations or new middle schools and the, you know, million, $60 million, $80 million questions, those are probably gonna be more addressed by the town permanent building committee than maybe the capital planning committee.
Yeah. My concern, my, the only reason I brought up the question is, with that question out there, are decisions being made to not spend money on the schools? In the fear that, you know, it would be wasted. You know, my concern being, the risk is we never do it, or if we do it, you know, we don't do anything for 10 years or something, and things start to fail.
To your answer, to answer your question, we also, that particular aspect we do take into consideration. So our recommendations are based on the equipment that are kind of vital to the function of these schools.
Does anyone else have any questions for Dr. Metz?
Is the Greenwood exterior door, that's still on the warrant?
No.
The Greenwood is on the warrant because it was part of the town manager's proposal, and that is what is printed in the warrant at this point in time.
Okay.
Again, the selectmen haven't voted on any finalization of this, but that's, that would be in the draft of the warrant.
So, if I may ask, Paul, what, what has been removed in order to prevent that? Because we were right up against a limit that you had given us.
The two, the two $15,000 requests were removed. Your actual requests also were somewhat shy. You had $1,924, so I think when you add that 30, extra $30,000, it then went up to the allotment of $1,954, something like that. So it, it came out that it worked out with the removal of those other $15,000 articles.
Any other, any other questions for Dr. Metz? No? Thank you so much for coming to talk to us tonight.
We can do you.
Again, at the, I don't know if I said I identify myself, Maury Garrett, but we had anticipated a longer meeting because there was, of course, gonna be a select board portion of the meeting. But I don't think that we have any other agenda items on for tonight. It was just to discuss those warrant articles with the folks that were kind enough to come to the meeting tonight, so if there isn't any other business, I think we just need to determine when our next meeting is, is gonna be, which we, we may have already discussed that.
We talked about the meeting right before the print date.
Right.
So we could take our votes.
Right.
Right. So I think it was the fourth week.
Right. Marie, can you think you're gonna...
Yeah, so I'm sort of confused. So you were going to, were going to be, you were going to make some recommendation to the select board before we voted on Monday? Is there going to be some written recommendations, or you're actually voting on your positions after we vote on ours? Because we were trying to find a way to communicate back and forth.
Right, and, and that was, unfortunately, without the select board here, we can't really...
Yeah, but I was thinking maybe we could do, if you would have a written report, if you had some positions, so we could discuss it. Unfortunately, see, we've had illness and we can't get everyone together, but we're not really gonna discuss the actual budget till Monday.
So, because we've had the benefit of discussing some of the articles, I think that we are in position to give you what our impressions were of the draft that we looked at, and then part of that was talking to the folks today. I don't see anything, unless somebody heard something today that changes your position on, on, changes your, our tentative position on the articles based on our last meeting, then I don't think that we have any changes in what I would be sending over to Marie. I mean, we have some articles that we've looked at that I can say that, you know, that we're, that the committee didn't feel were controversial, and I think that there were just a couple. And I could email that to you.
Or you want to, you can just, I could take notes now, or you could do written. I just want to make a point that we've started the, it's after 7:30, so the public forum that is, is open, but I guess we don't have anyone here.
Right. I, I will say for the record that we are, we did have noticed a public forum today for the select board and the finance committee, a joint public forum, which we're required to do on the budget, and there are not, there does not appear to be any members of the public here to participate in that. So I...
Unless, Dr. Metz, you have anything you want to...
So, so if, I can, I can go through, let's see, we have Article Two.
And in Article Two, there was a request to get estimates from the two councils.
Right.
And those requests haven't made, just not in hand yet.
So that was, that's one article that I would say that the finance committee at this time wouldn't be prepared to make a recommendation on Article Two because we don't have that breakdown or any, we don't, we don't have the breakdown, nor do we have any feedback on whether that's gonna be even appropriate, or that's gonna be any numbers that we're gonna be privy to or not. We just don't have an answer on that yet. So that was one, that's one.
Excuse me, Maury, do you, I didn't write down, but I do have the breakdown of the expenses incurred to date.
Okay.
Do you want that also?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Could you also just say out loud what Article Two is? Because I'm making notes, sorry, for me to go back.
Yeah, Article Two...
And I know select board members are watching from home.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so the explanation of Article Two is that the town has and will continue to engage legal experts in the field of natural gas distribution in order to protect the town's interest in public safety and public health. The town is also dealing with the legal remedies to help offset costs associated with the cleanup of the site for the new DPW, so this would have been the asbestos abatement issue. And again, for the benefit of anybody listening, these are draft articles, this is not the final warrant, but this is something that the finance committee's been using so that we did have the benefit of being able to discuss with the select board beforehand so that we could make the recommendations timely. So that particular article is one where we're waiting on to hear back. So that's one that we, that we aren't prepared to make a recommendation on. The next one...
And the only background I can give you in regards to that is that, in regards to the pipeline, right now, we haven't even gotten in front of the siting board. And what it, they were renowned up front of DPU, and we became a, we intervened as a full party so we could get as much information as we could because we're not getting information directly from what used to be Columbia Gas, and which is, and so our attorney is very carefully, it is expensive, we filed discovery questions, but we still have the siting board, and we will have to decide as a town how active we will be with the siting board. The other, of course, we have to file the suit in order to recover on the asbestos, and that has not been filed yet. So what you're seeing now are current costs, but we know they're gonna be substantial going forward.
Yeah, and our, our interest was in understanding what the budget is for this litigation, meaning, I think several of us have experience with this, and, you know, outside counsel typically will give you a budget at the client's request, and you can ask them for the budget up through settlement up to the point of trial, a budget through trial, and then a budget all the way through appeal. And I think each year, as we see these requests come in, it keeps begging the question of, well, what are we really looking at? And I think that's really what our interest is. Understanding at the end of the day that you may get this information, but you also may deem it privileged to not share it with us. We understand that. But I think it's, at least we're hearing, there's no budget at this point, and we're, you know, interested in knowing what the budget is.
Well, I know we have a budget for the current DPU hearing, and how much we want or willing to spend on that, and when we're gonna stop. We might not spend the full amount. What the budget would be on the siting board has not been determined, because we don't know what our position will be if we're gonna go forward on that. And then, in regards to the asbestos, I don't, we can get, check with Attorney Quinn and how close we can get with that.
I have made contact with both those firms this week and asked for that, and they, both of them said they would provide it before Monday.
As soon as we get it, we will pass that, make sure you have that information.
The next one I have here, some notes for is Article Six.
And which is Article Six?
Article Six, town authorized borrowing $870,000 at the November 5th special town meeting, and this is to complete a pole and light fixture inventory. The additional costs include police extra duty, while the contractor replaced light fixtures on the town main roads, dumpster costs for the proper disposal, both the packing material and the old lighting fixtures, and potential tree trimming.
And I only have a portion of that information.
Right.
At this point.
And I think one of the questions that we had, Marie, was in my notes, and Paul did say that it was, it's too early to tell, was whether the savings that we were expecting to realize from these, the change of our lights, if we're, if we were actually realizing any of those savings, and, you know, the, we were filled in that at this point, it's too early to tell, but that was an article that I had in my notes that we were, we hadn't decided yet on, on, on our recommendation.
And only half of that process has been completed. That'd be the purchase of the poles and the lights, so they have not been converted, and where the money would, real money would come from, the conversion to the LED lighting is on, on hold at this point in time.
And is it on hold because of this...
So, you know, I can, I can add you to more detail on the project. So the, the Cobrahead fixtures, there's about, we have 700 of them. Those, the remaining shipment of those will be here tomorrow. Our installer is expected to be, begin installation March 17th, and then every two weeks after that, our energy lighting consultant will be submitting the rate... that, our energy lighting consultant will be submitting the rate change application to Eversource, and then we'll slowly start seeing that savings come in. It's going to be a process. It's, we're only doing the Cobra heads first until the end of June, and then we'll switch to the decoratives after that, but we're not anticipating this project being finished until probably sometime in the fall.
This coming fall?
Yes, yep. And I just, I don't, this is the first notice that anyone's receiving yet that the decorative, or that the Cobra heads have come in. There'll be a press release next week, and notice that installation's about to start. So it's good progress, but I haven't, haven't shared a lot of that yet because we hadn't had that delivery confirmed yet.
Did you want any more numbers or information on that before you decide?
No, I mean, this was the, in my notes, again, the main question was, you know, what was happening in terms of the savings, what was the status, and it seems like those questions have been answered. Does anyone else have any questions about the, the light project? So the other one was Article Seven, well, an additional one was Article Seven. And with respect to Article Seven, I believe, again, Paul answered one of the main questions we had, which was whether there was a specific project, our Article Seven refers to EV chargers. There was a $50,000 allocation for that, and the question that the finance committee had was whether this was for a specific project, for a specific use. And I guess the answer was no, that it was, it wasn't used last year, it wasn't approved.
It was approved.
Or the grant was approved, but the funds were not used.
The grant was not approved, so the funds were not needed.
Okay. So the grant wasn't approved, so we didn't need the funds.
Right.
So we want to have the funds available this year, again, in case the grant is approved.
Right, and they will reapply for the grant.
Yeah, and this is, this includes other energy efficiency modifications in buildings that open us up to a utility reimbursement, or not even necessarily reimbursement. The invoice directly goes to the utility. If they're running the rebate program, they pay 70%, and the town's responsible for 30%. So we've been aggressively pursuing that work with Energy and Sustainability Committee, myself and the facilities director. We've been meeting and kind of trying to tick off those projects because we see a great cost savings overall with reduction in utility rates. One was done last year at the fire station with some insulation work that helped reduce the gas utility costs. So this, my understanding is this, this amount is going to allow them to continue with that energy efficiency work in some of the town and school buildings, and certainly we're having conversations about EV chargers at a few facilities, including both new building sites, because now would be the time to lay that conduit and do that infrastructure work so we're not tearing up good pavement that we just paid to put down.
Any other questions on that one? So Article Eight, this is the reconstruction of Long Meadow Street, or repaving of Long Meadow Street, repairs of Long Meadow Street.
It would be for the engineering work to get on the transportation improvement program, the tip money, that we need to do certain amount of engineering work. I think your question was, there was, there was an alike amount approved last year.
Correct.
That was going to begin at the infield line and move north. At what juncture did that first appropriation stop, and where does this other appropriation bring us to it? I'm not sure if, whether you have that answer. I don't at this point in time.
So, Maury, that was another, we don't, we don't have that information, so that was one of the other articles that we had questions on. And unless anybody else has any additional questions on that.
No, I mean, I think in general, like, nobody's, nobody's against it unless we're only getting like one block at a time, and this is going to take us, you know, 10 years to, to get up to converse, so.
The only thing I can add to that, and I, I don't know where next year's, or last year's appropriation stops, and this one will pick up, but I do know that VHB has been retained to do the, some of the survey work for the right-of-ways, and they're expected to start work in the next few weeks or by the end of April. So that's, that was the phase that was for last year's appropriation. I just don't know, I can, we can get more specifics on, with this one before, but I'm anticipating it's for design work so that we can continue to keep our standing and possibly get scheduled on the tip.
Right, and again, if, if we can get those specifics before, we're, it's time for us to do the recommendations, it's going to make it that much easier to.
Definitely.
You know, speak intelligently in our committee about what it is that we're really recommending or not recommending.
Yep.
Article 11, on the, again, on the draft warrant, is, it's, it deals with tonnage, the.
Yeah, it, it deals with the purchase of the, of the barrels that were distributed to every resident, and, you know, the question is, are we wrecking, are we seeing savings in the reduced trash stream and thereby reducing our cost of disposal that would then pick up the town share of the, of those purchases, which were close to over $200,000? And I'm just looking, Mario did send me.
Right, you said that the question was to calculate the additional tonnage, to determine whether.
Right, right. He did send me, I just can't find it right off the top of my head here, and I can get it to you folks, but in his monthly report, he actually has the historical tonnage from year to year, month by month, and it did not, in my opinion, what I recall, it did not look like there was a, a large enough reduction in disposal, tonnage disposal, that is going to make up what our share would have been. So that's why we're going to the reserve, or their retained earnings out of that enterprise fund, to make sure that we have ample money to pay the bill.
My, my memory when we talked about this last week is that we already paid the bill, right?
We already paid the bill, it would be short.
And if we said no, you would still be getting the money from somewhere else?
If, if you said no, we would end up the year in a deficit, and it would be closed back out at the retained earnings. So it's properly, how do you want, you know, how do you, it's going to end up being the same, is the bottom line.
Was there any other questions on the Article 11 deal with the trash? I don't think. Paul, is this the one we discussed where there was, where there was an account that had a surplus in it that would cover the expense if we didn't approve the article?
That's the one that we were just.
This is the one we're just talking about, right? Okay.
Yeah.
So, Maury, just, just for, I, the indic, again, you know, we didn't, we didn't hold any votes on this because this isn't the, the final warrant, but the, from my notes, the sense that we had in the meeting was that the finance committee was disinclined to, to recommend that particular article, talking about Article 11, for the reasons that we've discussed here.
I actually didn't understand the reasons why you would decline it.
Well, as I recall, again, and folks can correct me if I'm wrong, that, that the feedback we got, talking about this for, with you, was that, number one, that the bill had already been paid.
Yep, yep.
And that this article was not necessary to raise the funds that would be needed to account for that, that if we did not approve the article, that you would then.
If we did not do it, it's going to end up being the same result. However, it is necessary, in essence, proper, to be properly done, it is necessary.
Does anyone else have any?
Yeah, just another comment about that. I thought, last time you spoke, you thought we may not have an operational deficit, but it sounds tonight.
Well, it, we may not have, again, if, if the tonnage starts falling off.
Yep.
And our cost from the remaining of the fiscal year drops off by $40,000, we will not have, we will not have a deficit.
But the, with the information you got from Mario.
But the information you just recently received from Mario, it did not seem like there was enough of a reduction that will make up that difference.
Okay, question, yeah, do you anticipate that recycling costs are going to start going up because of the?
Recycling costs will go up. As we start, we are beginning to have to pay for disposal of our recyclables. There is a $158,000 line item in the recycling budget specifically for that purpose. That was, it did not exist in prior years.
Paul, if I may, on, just only question that you said about it, not, we would not, it doesn't look like we're going to make it up this year, but presumably the barrels have a useful life of more than a year.
Yeah, yeah.
So is there an expectation that over time, we're going to make up that money anyway?
Well, you, yes, I mean, there's an expectation that there will be a reduction in the trash that is paid for, which is at a higher rate than recyclables. Unfortunately, now, we're getting to the point where we have to pay for recyclables, so it could take longer, where we were having a zero cost because it was expected that people would be doing more recycling, and the trash tonnage would be decreased, but the recycling tonnage would go up. There is still a difference between, like I said, the difference in the disposal cost of trash versus recycling, it's just not as large as it was, so it will take us longer, in essence, to recoup all that money back. I'm just trying to look at the curb site pickup. It was, for the month of November, I did find the material that they sent me, it was down 12.88%, and that's the tonnage. However, it was up in December by 2.8%, and it was up slightly in January by .08%.
Year-over-year?
From prior year. So that, that's kind of what I was, I was looking at, and that's the information that was in his, so this is his February report that was in.
Paul, now that you mentioned, there was, there was one other question that came up in the meeting. If you recall, there was discussion about the additional, not just the additional, but the, the free blue bag, or the free.
Right, there was a potential of additional revenues coming because there is a limited amount of trash that can now be, or, I mean, I guess it was always on our books, but now that it's being enforced, that there would be additional sales revenue from the purchase of those blue bags. When I looked at it between, I think it was probably at the end of, it was either January or February's results, the revenues from the blue bags was up only $500. So we have not seen that big increase in that revenue side either, yet.
Now, that, that goes to the next question, which was, over the course of the holiday period, where there's a.
Amnesty.
You're right, there's a blue bag amnesty of, I think it was one bag in previous years, and then that was for, if I remember correctly, that was extended to two bags.
Yep.
And we wanted to know how much revenue, or some kind of ballpark figure of revenue that a town potentially lost as a result of that amnesty.
I, I don't think we'd be able to determine that, quite honestly.
I mean, but you did, there was slightly more tonnage, so. We kind of got the answer in reverse.
Yeah, but regardless of the tonnage, the tonnage, whether it went in the barrel or a bag, the tonnage is going to be the same. It, it was the matter of, are we selling additional bags?
Right. I, I'm just saying that, I mean, it's probably inconsequential, but the fact that people got to put out more garbage, maybe they recycled less and put more trash. But, I mean, I think it's a blip.
Yeah. Paul, I would, I would characterize my personal view of this in the following way. I mean, I, I get why the request is being made, and I get sort of the net neutral effect, if you will. If we say no, I mean, you're just going to get it from somewhere else. I guess what bothers me is, everyone put a lot of effort into this program, and there was a lot of effort put into kind of marketing the cost savings behind it, and everyone here works hard to make the dollars and cents work annually on the budget. But what kind of grabs me is this silly little issue about, as I understood it, you know, there was going to be this sort of one free bag that gets put out in the holiday season, and yet someone decides they're going to put on the website, you can put two out. And to me, that goes a little bit to what we talked about a week or two ago, at least from my perspective, is talking about the strategic vision of Long Meadow and building this culture within the town, that every dollar and cent matters. And so for me, it's a little bit like sending a message where, you know, I'm going to say no, perhaps, because I just don't like it that maybe someone decides to take it upon himself or herself that they're going to be kind, but yet we've done all this work to, you know, try to make the budget balance. So is my view a little bit irrational, maybe? Is it a little bit mean spirited, maybe? But sometimes I feel like you just have to kind of put your foot down and sort of convey the message that just taking these unilateral actions is not okay.
I recommend that you could make a statement, like when you, to the select board, that you don't recommend the use of the holiday amnesty program anymore. So that definitely could be a recommendation that goes to the board for next year.
That's definitely something we could talk about. There, I, that brings up another question. I just want to make sure, I, I, before I even ask this, I think I know the answer to it. Assuming that we did recommend Article 11, the recommendation or non-recommendation of Article 11 is not going to impact whether or not this warrant puts our budget over the finance committee's recommended figure as far as the level.
Again, your warrant, or your recommendations that we're looking at for FY '21.
Mm-hmm.
This is an FY '20 matter.
Okay. So what impact is that going to have on FY '20? As far as the, because isn't this additional?
Well, i- i- if it came out of taxation, and you wanted to look in retrospect, did we meet the goal of FY '20, where we have, it, it really is not going to have any impact because these are coming out of the reserves, and it's not coming out of the taxpayers'. It's coming out of taxpayers' money, but from prior years before money had been accumulated.
And so.
We, we did not raise taxes, I guess, is the bottom line because of this issue.
Okay. So prospectively, is it going to have an impact on what the levy limit recommendation number is based on the assumptions in the spreadsheet moving forward? Because I know that those take into account what happened in the prior year and all the additions and changes.
Hopefully, it would have a positive effect because there's a limitation on the amount of, theoretically limitation on the amount of trash that can be thrown. Theoretically, it should create more in the recycling stream. Even though we have to pay for recycling, it's at a lesser cost than disposal of trash. So if we're just switching the stream of it, we should be paying lesser to dispose of it moving forward.
I think I understand what you're saying, but I think that's a separate issue. I'm talking about the additional $41,000 that's being taken from FY '20.
Right, it'll have no impact on FY '21.
Any other questions on?
It's non-recurring, right?
Correct.
Single time.
Yeah.
I don't think, unless somebody else has some notes that I'm missing, I don't think there were any other articles that we, you know, that came up as particularly controversial in the warrant. I, I wanted to say for the, just for the record, that the, that there was some discussion of having Chief Dearborn come to talk about the ambulance purchase specifically, and this committee didn't. and this committee didn't, um, didn't feel that the ambu- since the ambulance we know is revenue-positive, didn't feel that the ambulance was a controversial article. I just wanted to, to let, help to put that on the record.
Now, the capital planning articles, uh, you were recommending all of them, then?
With the, with the capital plan one?
I'm sorry. Well, the capital planning is mainly one main one, and then the, the borrowing ones.
And, okay, so, but you had no issue with that one? And CPC, you never make recommendations on, do you?
We, we, we discussed whether, yeah, we, we discussed...
So CPC articles, we always offer recommendation on, on every CPC article.
You do. So are there any that you're not recommending?
No, basically, again, uh, as I stated earlier, um, the initial impression was that the CPC articles were not controversial, but we had no information on them, really, and we felt that the, the best thing to do was to have, to ask, invite Steve Wyson to speak to them, um, and in that way, we, we would be able to enter in those recommendations with the benefit of the information.
Yeah, my comment was that if Stephen and Dr. Metz came and described their process and their policies, you know, that would give us the comfort level to, you know, rather than separately and do redundant work analyzing each of, each of these processes, i- if, you know, processes are in place to make good submissions to warrant articles, that, that would be good enough.
And I guess the only article left, then, is the budget article. Which is, I'm trying to look here.
Sixteen? No.
Before that.
Thirteen.
Thirteen? So again, um, my understanding of, uh, Article 13 is, is that, um, based on the revised recommendations from the spreadsheet, again, we started off with a, I believe the figure was one point eight four, um, for the levy limit increase, and, um, that was later revised, once all the finalized numbers were put into, I believe, two point zero eight. Is that correct?
I believe that was the number, yep.
Two point zero eight. So with a budget of one point eight seven five, based on what the current warrant article says, that that falls within the Finance Committee's recommendation, so I don't think, ba- based on that factor alone, the, the budget, um, isn't controversial. Now, if there were specific items on the budget that, um, members of the Finance Committee wanted to talk in detail, again, keeping in mind that this, especially with regard to the budget, that this warrant is not final. So, um, I'm sure that, you know, folks on the Finance Committee would wanna be, um, have the, the freedom to discuss, um, anything additionally, changes, but as we stand right now, the current draft or the warrant that we have now from the town manager, um, does not run afoul of the Finance Committee's revised budget recommendation. So, uh, unless folks disagree, I don't, I think that the budget is not controversial, based on that.
And was there anything specifically within the budget you wanted to highlight to the Select Board? I'm sorry, I keep looking at my phone, because, um, right, Mark Gold keeps texting me, so I just wanna make sure I'm, I'm including him in on this, okay?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So you mentioned there were some, some details within the budget that you had discussed. Is there anything else you wanted to pass on to us in regards to the budget? Or if you're satisfied with it, I'll, I'll pass that on to them.
No, I, I, I think that, you know, based on, again, based on the war, I, so the, at least, um, for the last several years, and there's been some discussion back and forth, but what the Finance Committee has tried to do is, um, avoid, uh, a micromanagement process when it comes to the budget. And that to, to, uh, stick to what our mandate is in the warrant, to engage in the long-term financial planning, we thought that, you know, the spreadsheet that we developed in conjunction with our, our CFO, Mr. Pasterzik, served that goal, was the best way to serve that goal, to establish what the big picture goal was, which was to help to stave off the fiscal cliff by keeping our tax levy limit increase under a certain amount, so that we would perpetually have a ten-year gap between the levy cap and where we currently are, which would be dynamic and rolling based on, as, as we've discussed earlier, Mr. Pasterzik updating us with what the budget figures were, um, the final numbers were from the prior year. And that, and this year is a perfect example of that, where we came in with a projection from last year of, uh, of a levy limit increase of no more than one point eight four. We had a budget, which was at one point eight seven five, but the revised numbers from the prior year put us at two point oh eight. So again, once again, it seems that we're gonna be able to get underneath that, uh, figure on the spreadsheet, which keeps us, again, um, several year, ten years away from the, um, financial, uh, from the fiscal cliff, as it's called, which is the, the hard cap on the levy limit. Again, um, it's worth mentioning that, that is based on certain assumptions, probably the biggest of which is the one percent annual growth, which that may or may not happen from year to year. You know, it, it, uh, you could say it's conservative, you could say it's aggressive, but the point is, we had to have some assumptions. Before, if we used an assumption of zero growth, um, obviously, that, that would put us in a, a, a little bit of a different situation. But again, the spreadsheet has the benefit of being dynamic, so each year, regardless of what the growth was, that can be entered into the, the spreadsheet, and we can come up with a new figure based on what the actual performance of the budget was in the prior year.
Marie, I'd just like to add, I think, for me, Marie, it's the first year on the Finance Committee. It was very helpful to listen to the budget presentation by the various town administrators and department heads who came to the Select Board for the joint meeting that we had. Because, like, I agree, we focus on the big picture, but obviously, to the extent any of us, I think, if we had any serious concerns about any particular line item, at least at the top level here, those questions were answered in that session, and was very helpful, and at least it, for me, in, in understanding why the various departments were, were proposing what they were proposing, and between that, and as long as it was generally falling within that range and, and below our, 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 our goals, it was, it was, it was an easier way for, for at least me to make my decisions around, um, accepting the budget proposals.
Now, in regards to process, do you think it would be better going forward if you put together something and writing an actual report that goes to the Select Board before they vote on the budget? Or do you think my attending and writing notes and giving them, uh, sending all notes on today's meeting? I'm trying to think of a process that we can establish now that can go forward.
Well, I, I, that's an excellent question. I, I, I definitely think that, um, there should be some discussion, you know, on the Select Board of memorializing, um, for the benefit of, you know, obviously, everybody who is currently on the Select Board, and everybody's on the Finance Committee, and everybody's on all these various committees, is not gonna live forever, and we're not gonna serve forever. So, prospectively, memorializing this, um, I guess, tradition that we have developed in the time that, you know, Marie, that I've had the benefit of working with you with the Select Board, um, of having these joint meetings where we are able to participate in the budget presentation, and, um, where we are able to offer our, our thoughts on the warrant or on the budget to the Select Board in person, and get any sort of questions or controversies out in the open, and, and hopefully, at least in front of the Select Board, so that they can be considered before the warrant is finalized, so that we run into less and, and less of situations where we have a warrant article, where the Finance Committee is put in a position where we have to not recommend it. I mean, or, you know, not recommend the budget, um, and then this issue goes to the fourth town meeting, or we have multiple articles on the warrant where the Finance Committee has to enter in, um, the explanation of a warrant article is gonna be discussed and recommended on the town floor. And then the, the residents of the town don't have the benefit of knowing whether the Finance Committee recommends something or not until the, the chairperson or comes to the mic and, and gives a recommendation that's surprising, not only to the members of town meeting, but to the Select Board. So, if there is a way to memorialize that, the tradition of continuing to have these joint meetings, I think that that would be very helpful.
So this is a public forum, uh, for people to come and ask questions, and no one's appeared tonight, but what we can say is, um, I will do a draft report of the concerns and information you're still looking for. I'll send that to you to review. If someone had come, we would have included their concerns in the report that we would then present to the Select Board before they make their vote on Monday, because this is an opportunity for residents to also express concerns. So I'll put together what your concerns were, and, uh, check with Lynn to make sure, and Paul, you get all the information you need, and then if there's anything else you want added to that. So we'll see if the chair next year will do that, but we, all we can do is try to start a tradition. So I'll put together a report of the information we've received, and if someone has concerns at home, they just couldn't come in because of our current, um, situation, and we're discouraging people, even with a small call, to just avoid all meetings. They can definitely send those questions or concerns to me, and then I will send that report to you, and you make sure I've, I've memorialized correctly what your concerns were.
Thank you.
And then we'll go from there.
Okay, so you're going, the Select Board is gonna be, and we have to decide what our next meeting's gonna be. So Select Board is gonna be, um, finalizing the warrant on Monday?
Yeah, we have to. In fact, it's, it's a very short window, and with this, uh, emergency management that we're in, it's, it's gonna be a difficult meeting on Monday. I think we're, we'll have to decide how soon we need to begin that, and, um, we'll try to streamline it and try to keep other things. We've already canceled, uh, Senator Lesser was supposed to come, Representative Ash, and we said no. We have to just get the budget done. So it's gonna be warrant and budget, and I think the jamboree has to also be on Monday?
Yes.
And that's gonna be it?
Yeah.
I think, we, hopefully, that's gonna be it.
Uh, yes, and then the items that were on tonight's agenda will be carried to Monday.
Those important votes, yeah.
Fairly straightforward.
And so I, I'll let you know what time we're starting, if you wanted to attend, or if you think the report's gonna be enough. I'll get the, uh, report together and try to get it to you the next... I'll probably work on it tonight and get it to you sometime tomorrow.
Okay. Eileen? So, um, so in order to have our meeting and get the recommendations on the warrant, we need to meet between, what, what is the final date, the twenty-fifth or the thirty-first?
No, I mean, closer to the twenty-fifth. I think it goes to the printer, like, the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
I think that's a Friday.
Twenty-seventh is a Friday.
Yeah, so I, I think it's kind of the twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh is, was the drop dead date. And that, I, I can confirm it with, with that.
Okay. So, um, folks, you wanna meet that Wednesday, or, um...
I thought we talked about the eighteenth?
Eighteenth, okay. That, that, that does sound right.
And af- after that meeting, if you have made your decision on all the articles and everything, if you could send that to me, and then I'll make sure the Select Board knows, so their communication has completed the cycle.
Okay. Now, I can't, um... I'm looking here. I can't do the eighteenth.
Okay.
I have a, I think I have a school meeting, or even a parents' meeting. Do you, what about the twenty-fifth? Oh, you said, no, it's not due. Is it due the twenty-fifth? You said the twenty-seventh?
I think it's the twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, okay.
That'd be like the la- the last day.
Yeah, you're going right up against the wall there.
Okay. What about the, um...
And also, it's, it's the recommendations, and it's the, um, Finance Committee's report.
Right, right. Well, the report, I, I, I would, put that together and circulate it for... Okay, so what about the seventeenth, or the sixteenth?
Uh, seventeen might be problematic for me.
Okay, so what about the sixteenth? Let me know. The sixteenth is, is Monday, so then we can't do the sixteen.
What about the twenty-third, which is the following Monday?
Twenty-third, Monday? That's, yeah. Does that, does that work? Twenty-third?
Yes.
Twenty-third?
Yes.
Huh? Twenty-third, okay.
Oh, good, okay.
All right, so the twenty-third, um, seven? Uh, we're gonna do the firehouse?
Uh, we'll check to see if they've got, you know...
The firehouse won't be available.
Okay, firehouse not gonna be available, so we gotta get another...
But you're meeting here on, so we can...
No, we're not meeting here on the twenty-third.
Oh, you're not. So we can't get into the high school, then?
What about the police station? I just, this is logistically more difficult than the police station or the firehouse, I think.
I'll check tomorrow.
Okay. So we're gonna, so we're gonna meet the twenty-third. Twenty-third, seven o'clock.
And right now, the, where can, uh, people at home find the budget online?
Oh, if you go to longmeadow.org/budget, it brings you right to it.
And draft warrant, is that on there?
I don't think the draft warrant is on there. It won't be on there until you folks complete it.
Till we've actually voted on it, okay. But the budget is available if everyone wants to go look at it, to send comments to us.
The budget in its current form is, is there, yes.
Paul, there are a couple of articles that are still in draft form here, where they're just some dot, dot, dots. I just wanna make sure that there's nothing that the Finance Committee needs to look at.
No, they're, they're, um, most of them are zoning types of things, and, and many of them will be dropped, because, or some of them will be dropped, because we just can't get to them right now. They were kind of placeholders. There's one placeholder there now for a petition, that's expected. But again, you, you folks wouldn't have to make any recommendation on it. It's not a financial article.
Any, uh, so we got our meeting, our next meeting. Does anybody else have any other? It's my, my wife's birthday today, so...
Oh, oh, well, who would wish that to Sam, or...
So happy birthday to my wife, Jackie, buddy. Right now, um...
It's recorded for all history now.
Not, not to put any pressure on anyone. I, I can entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move the adjourn?
The motion's made second. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Thank you so much, everyone.
And we'll close the public meeting.
Okay. Public meeting is closed.